We've got ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and follow this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, March 11th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. Everyone would please stand for the pleasure of the meeting.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the voting which stands one nation under the indivisible liberty of justice for all.
We have some public comments. We have two speakers signed up. One of them is Dr. Douglas Campbell. Mr. Campbell, if you would please use the podium and identify yourself for the right.
We have five minutes.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Douglas Campbell. I've married into the Villarreal family from the El Rosso Ranch area back in the early eighties. Been going to the ranch now since the late seventies. I built a house there and live there part-time now and plan to retire there. So I'm a bit vested in the in the community and really love it here. One thing that we're here to talk about, and you can see the families here, some of them, is the deterioration of the infrastructure and road services that we see out near the ranch. I've been here a long time, and I've noticed that it's a lot worse than it used to be. I think it's dual factors as far as root cause. I think there's been a degradation in some of the support and the repair out there, and the frequency of the repair, as well as the scope of the repair. That we're no longer getting any of the cattle guards cleaned out like we used to. One of the residents had to sell cows because the cows were getting out on La Marita Road and because the cattle guards are unserviced. The condition of La Marita Road in particular is a big problem because of the windmill industry there has really upped the traffic. There's large trucks, eighteen-wheelers going up and down the road now, tearing it up. When it rains, it's just impassable, a lot more than it used to be. Even when it rains, you know, we'd be able to get in and out. Now, it just gets impassable and can be impassable for a week at a time. So, you know, that's the main problem with it, and we would like to get some consideration for upgrading the road. There's it's getting I don't think it's fit for purpose anymore. It's a dirt road. It's not even a Caliche road. And with these large service trucks coming in and out of there with the frequency of them coming in and out of there, the road just isn't fit for purpose. It's not getting access to residential ranches and houses anymore. It's servicing, you know, industry, and it's causing a real problem for us. The demographic on the ranch has changed. There used to be children out there where the school bus would come, still comes for some of the families. But now, there's also an elderly population, myself being one. And, you know, there's times when the road's impassable. If we have a medical emergency or a fire emergency, there's just no access to the ranch. And so, we're getting more and more concerned about it. It's getting worse as time goes on with, like I say, with the frequency of the trucks, and the more the windmills go up, the more trucks there are. So, we would just there's a lot of other kind of associated issues with that that we would like to discuss maybe in more detail another time in a different forum. But that's kind of the broad brush issue, and we just would like some consideration on that. And at that, I think we have some people that have some specifics they'd like to express as well. Thank you very much.
Yes, I have Ms. Olivares.
Yes, my name is Renee Olivares, and I have lived out there fifty-seven years. And as he said, I mean, there has been a degradation in the road as time has gone on. But our complaints, I believe, are all valid. We have called on multiple occasions, and I don't mean to sound like, oh, you know, but at the same time, I mean, I spoke to you on May twenty-third or May twenty-second of last year regarding this issue, and you said, yeah, I'm gonna go out there. So I'm just asking a simple question as to what's it gonna take for you to go out there?
No, I've been going out there. Can I address the just address the question?
Well, except to you, Commissioner, but the rules are, when there's an open forum, that we just listen, we don't answer. But if you want to, I mean...
I'm just gonna address that question. I've been going out there, but since Pino got out, Pino was going from seven fifty-five to El Rosso Road, and I was taking care of El Rosso to six forty-nine. Since Mr. Garza came in, he just started going from El Rosso to seven fifty-five. El Rosso got left out because the communication with the Pino was he used to do it. So, I believe I went out there two months ago and went all the way to El Rosso, and I spoke to Denise, and I've been talking to Danny Carrera, and I've been out there a couple of times.
I believe it's been once in the fourteen months since you took office, but I don't want this to be a back and forth. All I want to know is what's it gonna take?
I'll be there this weekend, and...
We appreciate that. Thank you.
And rest of this issue, but I've been out there. Two months ago, I went all the way inside El Rosso, the way the Pino was doing it. So...
Because I believe it is county road. Am I correct in that? Because I believe that, I mean, we've asked and...
I think up to the last cattle guard up there.
To the last cattle guard? So then, if we were to choose to put gates up there to prevent...
I can't go in.
I'm sorry?
If you put if you gate it up...
No, no. In other words, to prevent our cattle from going...
If it is a county road, you cannot put a gate.
Correct. Okay, that's what I've understood in the past.
And if we've been maintaining it, it's a county road.
But that's my issue, or our issue, is that it is not being maintained.
Or cattle guards are not being maintained at all. The road maintenance is way down.
Yeah, but the cattle guards are the owners or the counties. We didn't install cattle guards out there, do we?
Those cattle guards are not ours. They were impeded to prevent our cattle from going onto those roads.
Was it the county...
Because if that was the case, then there would not be a county road.
Well, and we have our county attorney here, but my understanding is if the previous commissioners or administration allowed the cattle roads and the cattle guards to go in, then they become property. Anything inside that, if it is a county road, I'm not saying county road, but if it's a county road, then anything inside the right-of-way belongs to the county.
Okay, so then it would be the county's responsibility to clean up those because, as I said, it's causing financial hardships on this side for us, since that we have to sell our cattle in order to prevent accidents out there on that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. And again, we appreciate you all taking time and coming. Certainly. Okay, just identify yourself because you're not under the...
My name is Carmen Villarreal, and I live in El Rosso Ranch. I've been married to my husband for forty-seven years, and I've lived there for forty-five. My children grew up there. My grandchildren are coming in now. And my husband's family has been in Starr County for many years, generations. If you put all our families together, we own eight thousand acres. Between the Carreras, the Lopes', the Villarreal's, the Martins', all of us are related, and we pay taxes, property taxes. Yes, there's only four or five families living there, and yes, we can't vote, don't give too much on the voting, but we do pay a lot of taxes. And for what we have at the ranch, it's not enough. And this is addressed to you all. So we do pay taxes, and we pay a lot. And if we have to come in with all the families, we will. All we want is for us to call. We want maintenance on the roads every six months, twice a year. We're not asking for a lot. But we've had to we had to come here in order to get our commissioner to fix the roads. And we shouldn't have to. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Villarreal. And again, we thank you all for coming over and taking time and lighting us with the problem. We certainly do whatever we can to try and help. Again, we're not supposed to go into discussion in an open forum, but if need be, you can ask that be put on the agenda, and then, yes, then we can discuss. Okay? But thank you so much for making us aware of your situation. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. You don't have to, but you're welcome.
Can I ask, or can we say we can at a future meeting, we can ask that be put on the agenda and get into a deeper discussion?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else that needs to come before the court at this time? Do not we'll go ahead and follow the agenda. Next item is approval of minutes. We do have a lap week. Is that right?
I just will move you. Second, Your Honor.
Moving second to approve discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the vendor's list.
Yes, I just agree with you, Mr. President.
Second to approve discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Claims.
Would you approve, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor.
Moving second to approve discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. We will now move into our reports. First one is tax collector.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in front of you. If you can please follow me, so read it to you. Our total collections for February of 2024, just for Starr County entities, were two million four hundred and seventy-nine thousand seventy-five with twenty-nine cents. Current collections for February of 2023 were one million two hundred and twenty-three thousand two three hundred and seventy-six. There was a total current collections of one million two hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine with twenty-nine cents, more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for February of 2024, just for Starr County entities, were one hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty with seventy-one cents. Our total delinquent collections for February of 2023 were two hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight with ninety-eight cents. There was a total collections of thirty-three thousand five hundred and eight with twenty-seven cents, less than last year. As of February the twenty-ninth, my office has collected ninety-eight percent of the projected current collections. Projected current collections remaining are three hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five with sixty cents. Also, the tax office has collected thirty percent of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are two two million one hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-eight with twenty-two cents. There was no American Rescue Plan payments collected for this month. Collections made through the Department of Motor Vehicles were fifty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty with ninety-three cents. That concludes my report. If you have any further questions, I'll be more than happy to answer in my office.
Any questions on the report?
Thank you.
Next is County Department, Mr. Luntan.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I should have my report in front of you for the month of February. I'm just gonna kind of highlight a couple of these things. Our records management collected fifty-two forty-two copies, was two thousand thirty-six. Our records archive collected forty-nine seventy-one. Total due to the general fund, including all the other things, was twenty-nine thousand six forty-ten. It's been pretty accurate every month, as far as what we're collecting, anywhere between twenty-eight and thirty-five thousand. Wanted to share with the court, we did start a project with our vitals department. Part of these ARPA funds that were paid for in our real estate properties, we were able to put in some of these vital records at no additional charge. So they'll be updating all of our birth records. We did put it out on our website from, I think it's nineteen-ten to like nineteen-eighty-nine. So we're just asking the community to be patient. If they need their birth records, which they usually do, especially for getting their licenses renewed, that you just let us know. We need a couple of days just to get the records from the company that's digitizing everything. It's just gonna make it easier for us to have everything on file now. We won't have the we'll have the originals, but now we're gonna have it all digitized, and we'll have it easier for our constituents to be able to access it through our office.
This will be from what year to what year?
From nineteen-ten, Judge, to about nineteen-eighty-nine. So it's a lot of years. Those are all the books that we have in the back. It's just been on paper. So every time someone would request a birth certificate, they'd go in, we'd have to copy it, we'd have to put it together, and then put it on a paper and give them a birth certificate. So now, we're gonna make everything digital. Everything will be digital, everything will be at no additional cost to the county.
What about from eighty-nine to the present?
That's already in the system. So all that stuff is on the system. It's only the backdated stuff that we're getting fixed up. And of course, it's gonna go with some death records as well that we're also putting into our system. Any questions? Thank you.
Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is the revenue report for the month of February 2024. We're showing AUSA Solutions at one thousand five hundred, Marshal Transport Services nine thousand nine hundred and six, Marshal Medical Services two thousand one seventy-four, Marshal Services for Housing Inmates one hundred one hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Hidal County Sheriff's Office is two hundred and five, five hundred and ninety-two dollars, with a total of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and two. The account for February correction from March the first, 2024, was a hundred and six Federals to one hundred and twenty-three Hidalgo, eighty-five Starr County inmates for a total house of three hundred and fourteen. The monthly average was a hundred and twelve Federal inmates, a hundred and fourteen Hidalgo inmates. The additional revenue compared to 2023 to 2024, is an additional sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars from the same time last year. Currently, total amount collected for the year is two million nine thousand with three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, for a total percentage collected of forty-seven percent point twenty-eight. That is my report, sir.
Any questions, Thomas? It's just slightly below one hundred thousand, but I guess I need to keep in mind that February has two days less than the rest of the month. So if we added in for that, it would've been willing to the...
Yes, it averages about twenty-seven thousand dollars a day, more or less.
Any other questions, Thomas?
Thank you, Your Honor.
International Bridge?
Yes, Your Honor. For this year, on February 2024, we show an increase of fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the month of February twenty-two compared to that month of February twenty-four. We show an increase of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four with fifty cents on collections for the month of February twenty-two compared to the month of January twenty-twenty-four. Currency change, forty-three dollars with four cents. Total dollar collection was a forty-three dollars with four cents. Total traffic collections, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and nine with fifty cents. So we have a grand total connection for this month, this past month of February, sorry, for two hundred and twenty-one with three hundred and fifty-two dollars with fifty-four cents. That's the report for February twenty-four.
That sounds very, very good. Commissioner, also, I think this is the first time in the time I've been here that there is no variance in both collectors. So, congratulations. Any question, comment? Thank you. Treasurer?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of February 2024. Please follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at six million six hundred and six thousand nine fifty-seven with eighty-six cents. The ending balance for the road and bridge is at one million eight hundred thousand one twenty-three with seven cents. The enterprise funds, the ending balance is at one million one hundred and forty-two thousand three fifty-seven with eleven cents. The drainage district, the ending balance is at three million eight hundred and seventy-one thousand three eighty-one with ninety-one cents, which brings the total ending balance for all funds to thirteen million four hundred and twenty thousand eight fifty-nine with eighty-five cents. That concludes my report.
Commissioner, is that a good question?
Yes, sir.
On the general fund, the certificates of deposit, we only have eight thousand. Don't we normally open up CDs when at the beginning, when the taxes start coming in?
Is that that's the one for certificate of deposit data, one for the eight thousand?
Yeah.
I believe that's for precinct, precinct eight, I believe that. I believe that's for precinct eight.
Okay, but, oh, this are CDs?
Yes.
So the beginning balance that you show the one point nine million, or the ending balance, six million, we haven't opened any CDs?
No, not yet, Your Honor, no. These are the ones that we always had.
Okay, because normally, we open three months, six months, you know, and then we cash them in at the end of the year.
No.
I think it's been a while since we've done that.
So we haven't done it?
But if we have to, we can do it, Your Honor.
What's the difference in a regular, just checking account?
I think a regular checking account, I think they're paying something like three-point, three-point something, Your Honor, and the certificates of deposit, they're paying four point zero one.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Thomas?
Thank you.
County auditor?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. I have before you my unaudited monthly report for February twenty-ninth, 2024. I'll start on page one. Our reconciled cash and bank for general fund, six million three hundred and nine thousand four hundred and six dollars. Road and bridge, one million six hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred and eighty-two. Our payroll clearing account, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty. Page two, I display the revenues for the general fund. And our total revenues year-to-date collected on page three, reports eleven million six hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars collected.
Mr. Lanes, before you go in further on the revenues, I noticed that on the pilot programs, it showed zero collected, and I got with Ms. Zanavida with Rose, and she said that these monies aren't coming in.
We've had two for fiscal year twenty-four, two of them come in. The other ones were kind of behind, and they were for the past fiscal year.
Have we notified them? Because, see, the contract that they have is if they don't pay on time, then they lose their abatement.
Oh, I see.
So we do have leverage on them that they have to pay.
Okay.
So, and Mrs. Zanavida, I asked Ms. Zanavida, and I don't see her today, but she informed me that they are paying, yet it doesn't show up on our report.
Yes, I know. I did see a few come in. Some of them...
Can you check into that and report back to me?
Yes, I'll look into it. Okay. I'll continue to page four.
Excuse me. We collect they are paying?
Well, that's what Rose told me, that they were paying. But again, our reports never show they were paying.
They've paid in a few. I think for this fiscal year, we have two, Mestenos and Las Lomas. Those have come in for fiscal year twenty-four.
Well, as long as they pay by their contract.
Okay.
If they have it, then we need to either send them a letter or something, or let me know I'll make a phone call.
Okay. All right, then. I'll move on to page four. Budget summary for expenditures on the general fund continues to page five for a total year-to-date expended of eight million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, with excess of revenues over expenditures of two million six hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars.
That's on page five?
Yes, sir.
One question on page five. The county public library, where did we spend that money? We don't have it.
That was, it was a grant that was provided to one of the libraries, a precinct two library. The grant provided funds to that library, and expenditures have been coming out. Yes. Okay, I'll move on to page six. Budget summary for road and bridge. Revenues year-to-date collected, four million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-seven. Year-to-date expenditures, two hundred, excuse me, two million eight hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, with an excess of revenues over expenditures of one million four hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. I'll move on to page seven for the enterprise funds. International Bridge, year-to-date revenues, one million one hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Year-to-date expenditures, one million three hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and eleven, with an excess of expenditures over revenues of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Gas system, year-to-date revenues, four hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and eleven. Year-to-date expenditures, three hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars, with an excess of revenues of one hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Transfer station, year-to-date revenues, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and six dollars. Year-to-date expenditure, seven hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars, with an excess of expenditures in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Our debt service has a year-to-date revenue collection of six hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Year-to-date expenditures, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten, with an excess of revenues of six hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. The last one on the list are special revenues for the American Rescue Plan. Remaining budget, year-to-date, four million three hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. My last page, page eight, debt summary for the month of February twenty-ninth. We have a debt outstanding of three million nine hundred and seventy thousand seventy-three dollars. That concludes my report. If there's any questions? All right, thank you.
Moving on with our agenda, we move on to number eight. It's an action item, and this is to approve a permit for belly telephone to place fiber cable on La Marita Road and Sella Road in Starr County and six forty-nine and thirty-one sixty-seven.
Mr. Luntan?
I have a moment.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, we're proposing to place fiber optic cable on the Sella Road and La Marita Road.
Where in La Marita Road? I thought there's cable there already.
There's copper cable. We're gonna convert it over to fiber. We're gonna place it from six forty-nine on thirty-one sixty-seven going back in, and it will hopefully be for about a half a mile.
So I do have a motion? Second discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed.
Thank you, sir.
Item nine is an action item, and this is to approve a grant agreement between the proposal's office and rural law enforcement salary assistance.
That is correct, Your Honor, Commissioners. This is a grant that was approved through the House Bill twenty-two, through the state law, that all law enforcement, all deputies and jailers need to meet a requirement of deputies forty-five thousand, and the jailers forty thousand. So due to our population, the sheriff's office was awarded a five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, good. Moving second to approve discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Item nine, also an action item, and this is to approve a grant. I'm sorry, ten, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, uh, ten, I'm sorry. From the, uh, Comptroller's Office for the Attorney, County Attorney's Office, uh, and this is, I believe, about the same thing for salary adjustments.
That is correct, Your Honor. Again, it's, uh, the rural prosecutors were awarded two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and it's for them to be able to, uh, hire new personnel, uh, for example, like investigators and crime victims coordinators.
Move in second, discussion. Discussion, you know, I just want to state that this, this is a hundred percent grant.
That is correct, Your Honor.
And this includes all the fringes and everything.
That is correct. That is correct.
This is, this is good grants. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And number eleven, uh, to approve policy and procedures for the nutrition program.
That is correct, Your Honor. This is a, a policy and procedure that we need to have in place to continue with the nutrition program.
rosa, again. Move in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, item twelve, an action item, and this is to approve notice, uh, to consolidate precincts for the hospital on May fourth election.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Um, so, uh, hospital's gonna have an election on May fourth, and, um, we would, uh, like to notify, um, for, to consolidate the precincts, um, they wanna have a voting location on election day, um, I, at Precinct Two Courthouse. Um, so we'd like to consolidate precincts one, two, four, and thirteen, which is, uh, Commissioner Precinct Four, um, to be able to vote in the courthouse, and also, um, to also consolidate those same precincts at Precinct Four, Abel Gonzalez Community Center on election day on May fourth.
Is that, is that for the only precinct voter?
Yes, um, I guess for the position, it's only for, uh, um, hospital board, um, precinct four, so they wanna have two locations, and so we wanna consolidate so that they can vote in both locations of four.
And the hospital is okay with that?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Move in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Uh, item thirteen, we're gonna skip that one until after executive session. Uh, item fourteen, is an action item for a contract agreement between Cintas and Precinct One for rental of uniforms.
Yes, sir, just to upgrade, uh, the uniforms for the county employees. rosa, your honor.
Take it. Move in second, discussions. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items, uh, fifteen through nineteen are budget amendments.
Take it.
Move in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty is a, uh, request for a budget correction. So, please? Move in second to approve, discussion. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is ten thirty-five, in pursuit of section five hundred one point oh seven four, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and discuss, uh, ASO. Forty, and we're back in open session. Let's go back to item thirteen, and it's an action item to approve the contract with iDoctor for the iCloud system. rosa, your honor.
Take it.
Move in second. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In the second session, we had, uh, the order of salaries. rosa, your honor, a discussed executive session.
Second.
Move in second. Honorable, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The other item we discussed in executive session was the ASO, the non-just information for no life insurance. Is there a motion to, uh?
Take it.
Move in second, honorable, please, aye.
Aye.